We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting for April 2021. At this time, we're going to have an invocation by Ms. Moffett and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Benton. Please stand.
Father, we come to you this evening with Thanksgiving. We thank you for a wonderful spring break. We thank you that the kids are back in the schools safely. We ask your blessing on the teachers, the students, and all staff that touch each kid each day. We thank you for the joy and the laughter and the love that the teachers give to the kids. Be with us tonight and help us to use sound wisdom in all decisions that we make. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a board salute. Mr. Siemens.
All right. Good evening, board members. We have one change, one just postponement, as it would be. Our first Sergeant Jeff Clendenin had something come up and he is not going to be able to make it. He is our NC school hero and we can give him a salute, but we really need him in person to really give him some appreciation. So we're going to, we've talked with him, we're going to have him on the upcoming, on the next, on the May agenda for the board meeting. So let's talk about this school year, remote learning has basically taken center stage and along with all the computers and the ever-changing schedules and what feels like daily challenges, has come a new recognition in the district, the BCS, the Brunswick County Schools Remote Learning Teacher of the Year. Our traditional Employee of the Year process, it's in full swing, will have those announcements in the beginning of May, but because this one is unique and it had a deadline for some regional competition, submission to regional competition, we had to speed it up a little bit and ahead of the, our normal deadlines. So we will be celebrating it in the fall as well, but we wanted to give a little recognition since the secret is, or the cat's already out of the bag, who our Remote Learning Teacher of the Year is. This year's recipient has and continues to embrace the new. As a matter of fact, to quote some words from the original district announcement, quote, "Ms. O'Hara maximizes the use of her digital tools, provides ongoing feedback and engagement opportunities for her remote students, and shares best practices with peers." That is like the remote learning trifecta of perfecta. That is just something to, this is really amazing. It is our pleasure to welcome the first of Brunswick County Schools Remote Learning Teacher of the Year, Ms. Betsy O'Hara, eighth grade math teacher at Cedar Grove Middle School, to the podium. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you so much. I'm honored to be the first. I truly hope I'm the last. I like remote learning, but I love having my class better. But I just want to say a few words, if that's okay. Okay. First, I'd like to start by saying, Dr. Oats and the Board of Education, I just want to commend you on this school year and the decisions you guys have had to make. I know it could not have been easy, but together you made decisions that you felt would benefit our students, our teachers, and our community. So thank you for your leadership during a very challenging time. I'd like to take this time to recognize three people that without their guidance or insight, this award would not have been possible. The first one is Ms. White. Molly, thank you. Thank you for being an Assistant Superintendent who is visible, approachable, and so supportive. Pre-pandemic, you were in classrooms, meetings, professional developments, and still even during this new way of learning, you still continue to be visible. You attend PLCs, professional developments, and classes through Zoom. You always say hello, you have a smile on your face, and you're so very approachable, and I appreciate that. I know that if I have a need, a question, or even a concern, I can come to you. Thank you for being so supportive. You truly are a gift to Brunswick County Schools. Next, I would like to thank and recognize Acacia Dixon. I know she's not here. Part of me thinks that she has ESP or a time machine to the future, and she knew we were going to need to learn and teach using technology. Acacia's creativity and push for professional developments with technology is what has allowed us to grow, has allowed me to grow as much as I have in using technology. Last year, she came up with the one byte at a time PDs, and that is how I was able to be successful at the end of the last school year and even more successful this school year, teaching virtually. Her knowledge, guidance, and insight into all things teaching with technology has been instrumental in me being able to teach hybrid this year. I went from using no technology, none, literally none, to learning all things Google, creating interactive slides for my students, and teaching my peers how to be more successful virtually with their students. Thank you, Acacia, for all that you bring to your, to our schools, teachers and students. This is the best county I have worked for when it comes to technology and programs, and I truly mean that. I've worked in another county in this state, and I also taught in Florida, and this is probably the best county, this is the best county as far as technology and programs that's provided for teachers and students. I mean, lastly, I would like to recognize and thank Mr. Hayes, my principal. A successful school starts from the top down. A successful teacher is the result of the leadership they receive. Mr. Hayes is the most positive, supportive principal I have ever worked for. He sets high expectations for himself and his teachers. He then supports his teachers to make sure they meet those expectations. He leads by example in all that he does. The thing I appreciate most about Mr. Hayes is that he believes in you when you may not believe in yourself. If you have an idea but are afraid to try it, he will tell you what you have to lose. He encourages us to try new things, and in the words of Dr. Oats, embrace the new. His positivity, support, high expectations, and believing me, believing in me is what allowed me to be a successful hybrid virtual teacher this year. Mr. Hayes, you're truly an amazing leader, and our school and community shines because of it. And lastly, I'd just like to close by saying Brunswick County Schools is by far the best county I've ever worked for. So thank you so much for this honor, and I am so humbled and proud. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Huh, huh, huh. Then we will be revisiting this whole thing when we do the official awards in the fall, but a certificate of appreciation.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And we cannot leave this, I can't let you walk away without mentioning that you have recently been nominated for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics, Mathematics and Science Teaching. So another possible award coming up, a Presidential Award.
I was selected as one of my winners for this award, and I have my interview tomorrow, and they will let me know if I'm the Southeast Region winner or not on Friday.
The region, all right. We cheer you on. All right. Let me see if I can remember password number 869.
You know, I wanted to comment to Ms. O'Hara, your reputation precedes you, and I have heard that she is, if not the best math teacher in the county, right at that. And I've also heard that, I think it's Ms. Coggins, that she taught with at Cedar Grove, and they, it was a special class, special, exceptional students and a regular class. I have heard that they were as good as anybody in the country working together in that mode. So we do appreciate you being here and working for Brunswick County Schools. Thank you.
A role model for both, both students and adults alike. So we have, if you don't mind, Chairman Lemon, I'll move straight into some presentations because we have a couple of spotlights that we want to talk about.
Sure thing.
We'll start with right before spring break, like literally Thursday at 6:00 PM before Good Friday. We held the 49th Annual Odell and Virginia Williamson Oratorical Scholarship Contest, 49 years running, a success again. Our own Assistant Superintendent Darrell Cheers served as Master of Ceremony and did some exceptional, exceptional work. It's not easy to be able to, to, as I joked during the, during the contest, it felt like he's been a recipient of this speech contest in the past. But we did want, this is the group shot. This, these are our students who, who took part in the 49th Annual Contest. We do have the winners. So first up, this is Aubrey Chirard of South Brunswick High School. She won for her speech titled "Health Care, A Right or a Privilege?" And then next, I said South Brunswick High School for Aubrey, and then Mr. Cameron Gilbert of West Brunswick High School was, won the contest for his speech titled "Drum Major for Change." I'll give you one guess what he is in the Trojans Band, possibly Drum Major? So both received $2,600 in scholarship money. That is courtesy of the Williamson family. We want to say congratulations to the two district winners. A big thank you to the organizer, Leslie Newman, who took this on for the first year and put it together. And then, of course, the Williamson family for their continued support of Brunswick County Schools. And then finally, we are going to stop and smell the roses, so to speak. I say that, but I kind of mean it literally. You are looking at 11th grade North Brunswick High School Scorpion, Joelle Lowry. She took part in the 2021 Azalea Festival Youth Art Contest, and she happened to take home first place in the, in the contest. There were more than 250 entries in the Azalea Festival Youth Art Contest. Ms. Lowry's winning piece is currently on display through the end of the month at the Community Arts Center in the Hannah Block Historic USO Building at Second and Orange Streets in Wilmington. That is a copy of, of her work. And as you can see, we have some talented artists here in the district. And that is a wrap of the spotlights, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have teacher's voice from our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jenny Bryan.
Good evening. Good evening. And Ms. O'Hara, congratulations. We'll have to settle up tomorrow. And Mr. Hayes, we could not have, we didn't plan this or coordinate this, but I'm going to be bragging on another one of your teachers this evening in just a couple of minutes. So before we resume our teacher's voice episodes, I just want to share with you that it has been a great first couple of days back at school in Plan A. It really has been. I thought it would maybe take students a few days to kind of get back into the groove and feel normal with having additional students in the classroom. And maybe it has been like that in some classrooms, but not in Room 506. My students came back ready to reengage, asking questions, having classroom discussions. And over the last few days, I've heard comments like, wow, the parking lot was full this morning. And, you know, it's loud in the cafeteria again, and it actually feels like school again. I've made it a routine in my classes to check in with my students by asking them this question, what's filling your bucket today and what's draining your bucket today? And just today, one of my students who has just returned from being a 100% remote student, shared that making a new friend was filling her bucket today. So all that to say, it has been a great couple of days. And it was great to see Mr. Berger with Mr. Cheers at South Brunswick today, and I know others of you have been in school seeing this for yourself. So thank you so much for taking the time to do that. It means a whole lot to us. A colleague today of mine made the observation that yesterday felt like maybe the fifth first day of school we've had this school year. And with the changes in the schedules we faced over the course of the year, I imagine that's probably about right. And while the schedules and expectations may have changed over this year, I know that our teachers' hard work to do the best for our students and by our students has always been constant. And so I want you to, I want to thank you all for recognizing that with the forthcoming May bonus for the certified and classified staff and for agreeing to fund the remaining $500 teacher supplement increase, first initiated under the previous board. So thank you so much. All right, now to our teacher's voice episode. Before the break, I had the opportunity to speak with Cedar Grove Middle School's chorus teacher, Jenica Hustis, about what it had been like teaching a performing arts class during a pandemic. For the first time in her 11 years of teaching, Ms. Hustis had to do things like organize virtual talent shows for Cedar Grove Middle School students to showcase their talents. While she and her students are anxious to get back to live and in-person performances, she and her students know that there is value in the arts beyond performing, specifically in the area of social-emotional learning, which as you all know is near and dear to my heart. And with that, I'll let Ms. Hustis share the rest.
Chorus is a performance-based class, and so, you know, we haven't gotten to have a performance since December of 2019. And the kids have taken that really hard. They've all year long have just been like, I want to do another concert, or, you know, I want to go on a trip, because we normally take a trip every spring and, and do things like all-county chorus and go to NPA where we perform for judges. And we just haven't gotten those experiences. And it's hard on the performing classroom because the kids there, they know that. Actually, yesterday, we were just talking about this, some of my eighth graders were just talking about how bummed they were about last year. We were two or three weeks away, I think, from performing at NPA and getting judged, and they had worked months on these songs and prepared so hard and come so far. And they were just talking about how bummed they were that they never got to do that, and that we didn't get to do it this year. And one of my students actually said, well, Ms. Hustis, do you remember how much we improved? And that, in that moment, that was like an eye-opener for me because it reminded her peers and me as well that it's not just about those performances, that it's really about the progress that we make. It's about the learning and the growing that happens. And, you know, they can take away our performances, but they can't take away that growth. So we naturally bring in social-emotional learning into the chorus classroom because we're always working as a team. We're always working together. It's not an individual kind of performance. We have to learn how to rely on each other, to listen to each other, and constantly be working together. So that's a really big part of it, just building those relationships and realizing it's not all about me. I have to, you know, interact with my peers, and no matter what I might feel about them, they're still part of my team, they're part of my family. And another thing that I've noticed that we really bring out in the kids is just self-awareness because we are performing. I use recordings a lot, so I'll either videotape them or record them just on audio. And they do self-evaluations. They listen to themselves as a class, and they talk about what do we need to work on, what did we do well? And it's always a really good eye-opening experience for them because it's not something that we naturally do. We don't naturally record ourselves and, and look back at what we've done and see, how can I improve myself? So it's a good skill for them to learn. Back together, we can just be able to make music again together and have a larger group of us and get that experience that they've been so missing over the last year. Because even with A and B, the students, the groups have been really small. And so it'll be nice to get them all together again and really just see their relationships come back together because they really miss each other, and they miss that environment of being together and working together. So I'm excited to see that.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's now time to approve the meeting agenda.
Mr. Robinson.
Before we approve, let me ask if there's any deletions or additions needed? With that, we have a motion to approve of Mr. Berger. Can we have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Me.
Mr. Robinson seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting agenda is approved. Approval of minutes, and we have like 300 pages of minutes. Three meetings on the 2nd of March, three meetings on the 23rd of March, and then a special meeting on the 30th. Any corrections to the minutes? Anybody notice? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes by Ms. Moffett, second by Mr. Berger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We have the consent items for approval. We have the construction dollar threshold increase, the West Brunswick Heating Facility contract, South Brunswick Heating and Air contract, and the bonus for certified and classified staff to be paid in May, and the budget amendments. We have a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve with Mr. Robinson. A second, please.
Second.
Mr. Berger seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion for consent items is approved. Action items, that, number one is $500 increase teacher supplement to be paid in April. I don't know if there's any, we've discussed this at the committee meetings. Is any further discussion needed?
Mr. Lemon, as we talked about in our previous committee meeting, I'm proud to be a part of supporting this and approving it. I believe it was the attend of the previous board, and I think we're doing our due diligence to carry out that promise.
Yeah, I agree. The increase in supplement, to me, is more important than the bonus because it's recurring. So each time we are able to improve the supplement for teachers, we always enjoy doing that and are glad to be able to do that. Can we, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Robinson makes a motion to approve. Mr. Berger seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved for increase of $500 for this teacher supplement. The Lehman Middle School Heating and Air Contract.
Board members, this, we talked about this during, the operations committee didn't have the final number. The final number is close to what was expected, $1,986,000. This is design-build project and includes total commissioning, which guarantees that all the systems will integrate and run as they should before the job has, before, we call it substantially complete. This is 12 rooftop units, two complete pods, guaranteed annual energy savings of $7,000. But the best thing about this is all this equipment has passed its useful service life and needs to be replaced. And so staff recommends awarding this contract to Snyder Electric.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Berger, a second by Ms. Moffett. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion is approved. Cedar Grove Middle?
Yes, sir.
Metal roof.
Cedar Grove's metal roof was damaged during Hurricane Florence. After a lot of investigation and attempted repairs, it was determined the roof needed to be replaced. Three bids were, the, the design was advertised, three bids were received, and REI is our engineer on this, on this project, and we agree with the engineer that the lowest bid in the amount of $1,694,000 from Southern Metals be accepted and approve the contract with Southern Metals to begin that work in May.
Any questions from Ms. Rutledge?
I have one question. Mr. Chairman, Sue, the money for this, it was hurricane damage. Can you go over the funding mechanism, or maybe Ms. Cahill, however you guys want to tackle this, but where the money's coming from and how we're being responsible for it?
Yes, sir. There you are. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah. We, we, we asked for reimbursement from NCDPI, which that's who our insurance is with. And we, we tried to, to work through other means and, and, you know, maybe not replace this roof, maybe not use that money, try to get that money from FEMA. We were unsuccessful, so NCDPI is going to cover the cost of this through the insurance fund.
Through the insurance fund, essentially.
Oh, my. So it's a state fund's money. Let me know if they pay the pot money to the district after we spread right up to Florence. We still have some of that, and we announced that we would use it around those two projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Rutledge?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Benton to approve. I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Berger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion, that motion is approved. And the last one is change order for the Coast.
Yes, sir. Part of the 2016 bond program included construction of Automotive Center and Culinary Center at the Coast, and those projects were approved by the board in June 2019. Part of the project included using part of the existing gym as an area for serving meals prepared by students to various groups. Since that time, staff has recommended additional finishes to the serving space that's allocated for the culinary program. And the purpose of those changes is to enable the space to be used by a larger variety of users and community groups. The additional equipment and finishes in the space will provide an opportunity for students not only to learn about culinary activities, but the associated needs that accompany managing meeting space, which is kind of a part of the culinary, the whole culinary curriculum. Students would learn and experience the requirements of what is typically done in a conference center-type venue. Typical meetings appropriate for the space would include training and professional development, community business meetings, and small committee-type meetings. Architectural changes to more fully outfit the space include a drop ceiling and acoustical treatments, meeting space-type lighting, a small podium and stage area, reconfigurable meeting furnishings, restroom changes, audiovisual infrastructure, and code-driven changes that were required when we put it, put the drop ceiling in. The project architect delivered the drawings to the construction manager, Bordeaux. They solicited bids for the additional work. And so the, the total cost, hang on just a second. I've lost it in here somewhere. Hang on just a second. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, where is it?
$278,000.
Thank you. $278,449 is the cost of the change order that we're asking the board to approve.
Any questions or Ms.?
One. With the new drop ceiling, is that going, do we have to worry about moisture above since it's alofted, or are we going to put some kind of circulation? since it's a lofted, or are we going to put some kind of circulation or some way of control in community?
Yeah, we had to do some air, some HVAC modifications in the space to be able to handle that as well.
Okay, worst case, we just add a unit like we have in Town Creek or something like that, that'll dry it out?
I'm not sure exactly what was, what's done.
Okay.
But I know that the space, we did have to do air conditioning work in there to be able to manage above the ceiling and below, too.
Okay, that's my only concern. Thank you.
Yeah, that, I look forward to that space being completed, because I know we don't have currently a nice place for staff development when you have a large group anywhere in the county, so, and among the other things you mentioned, so it was sorely needed.
Yeah, and, you know, for us in operations to be able to have students, to be able to learn that kind of work, you know, that's kind of what we do. And it's hard for us to, it's hard for us to recruit people here in a lot of our jobs, so this is just good for us.
Yeah, it's really a multi-purpose facility, and we may be able to hold our board meetings there, and we're not sure about that yet, but hopefully. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Berger makes a motion to approve, second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Change order for the coast is approved. Discussion announcements, Dr. Oats?
Just like to take an opportunity to kind of echo the sentiments shared by Ms. Bryan earlier about the opening of school on, under Plan A. I've had the opportunity to visit several of the schools yesterday, and I had an opportunity today with Mr. Benton and Mr. Robinson to visit a couple of schools, and I know Mr. Berger went with Mr. Cheers. And it was interesting, we all kind of shared the same sentiments upon talking later after that. And one of the things that I shared was that it's good to hear the sound of school again, the noise of school, if you will, kids talking, kids getting loud in the cafeteria, seeing kids in the classroom engaged, teachers standing and delivering instruction. Those are things that we've missed for over a year, and to have them back and to see them is something that is definitely refreshing. And words really can't express how glad I am to see that. The teachers I've spoken with, the administrators I've spoken with, have all expressed delight in having their students back. And folks make choices the way they want to make choices, but I can say, having the numbers that we have in the schools right now is wonderful. So I applaud this board for always pushing to do as much as we could, when we could, as it pertains to getting our students back. So thank you for that. I want also to take a moment to go back to one of the consent items that you approved, and that, of course, is the bonus for our employees, both our certified and classified. Just wanted to give some clarity to some things as to how the bonus would be administered. As you know, it's $1,000 for all employees certified and classified. With this, there will be no retirement taken out of the bonus. Bonuses are not considered compensation, so that would not come out of any bonus money. It would be paid at the end of May. However, to receive the bonus, employees must have been employed prior to January 5th and must be employed as of March 23rd. That is when we had our committee meeting, and this was when it was first brought to the board in order to have consideration for the consent agenda tonight. So those are some of the things to clarify with the administration of the bonus for our employees. Again, that is employed before January 5th and had to be employed as of March 23rd. So if you were employed as an employee, if you were employee as of March 23rd, you would be entitled to the bonus. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Lastly, one other thing I want you to consider is, as you know, the June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd are our dates for graduation, but also June 1st is a scheduled board meeting. So it may be something for the board to consider between now and then, the possibility of moving the scheduled board meeting on the 1st of June, possibly to the 8th, in order to not have the graduation and the board meeting on the same day. So that's something to consider, and we can make those adjustments as needed. Okay? And that's all I have for this evening.
Any other items?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just echo what Dr. Oats has said about the bonus. I know this whole board has thanked our staff, our teachers, our custodial staff, everybody who works in our school system, so don't leave anybody out. I had the opportunity today, as I'm with Bryan in the hallway, to go to a couple of schools, and what our staff and our schools is doing is amazing. And I'm glad we have a teacher here tonight and a principal and everybody else watching. I just want to show my appreciation for everything that you, Dr. Oats, and your staff, all of our staff in our school buildings, Sue, your staff, everybody has done throughout this year to help our children be as successful as possible. I saw some hybrid learning today that was different, because there's more students in the classroom, and the way the teachers were going back and forth, and I couldn't keep track of it watching just for a minute. I'm not sure how they did it, but they were doing it, and they were doing it well. And so I just want to thank everybody for the dedication and the hard work they've done this year.
Dr. Oats, since you spoke about graduation, just for the parents out there, seniors, can you speak to the plan of what our county did with Ms. Sue? What a wonderful thing they did for each high school for graduation.
Yes. We will have a traditional graduation that will be held on our football stadiums. We've taken into consideration the protection of our newly-installed turf on those fields, so we want to make sure that we do what we need to do to make sure that's protected. And our operations department has done a fine job in finding us covered strips in which, on which the students will be able to sit and utilize our stands for parents and visitors for the graduation ceremonies. It will be outside, so you know how the Brunswick County summers are. So just telling folks in advance to dress for the occasion, dress as cool as you possibly can, you may want to bring some umbrellas, not for rain, I'm hoping, but definitely for sun shade. So we'll be on the football fields for that. So it is wonderful to be able to, again, go back to some sense of normalcy after a year of being kind of out in the wilderness, so to speak. So we will definitely be having all three graduations in that manner.
And I also want to say, Sue researched the protective coverings, and it also benefits the bands. So I just wanted to echo that and say that it's a win for our marching bands, because I know the drum lines have had some issues getting on the turf. But by using the coverings, it's just a double win for, you know, continued use of the turf coverings. So I think that's great for our marching bands as well. Thank you.
Well, and graduation outside like that will be fine. We did it for years, barring a thunderstorm, which is always a possibility, but graduation works there just fine. So I hope everybody has a beautiful graduation. And at this time, I ask for a motion.
Me and Mr. Benton, as well as Dr. Oats today, we did get to go over to Charlotte Middle and West Brunswick, and I wanted to make a couple of comments. We actually got to go in and see the automotive folks, carpentry folks, and the robotics technology class. Wow, that was impressive. I was taken back of some of the things these folks are doing in the classroom, but it was very, very impressive. And that was good to see, hearing folks in the hallways and things getting back to a semi-normal state in the school. Thank you, Ms. O'Hara, for being selected, the remote teacher, learning teacher of the year, and Ms. O'Brien, that was good information, as always. And I wanted to, I worked with Mr. Benton during committee meeting, we had an anti-bullying presentation, and I look forward to continue working with those staff so we can potentially improve our policy down the road and going forward. And I had some comments from some parents, just to make note. The school board, we are continuing to be updated with regard to the COVID issues. There's been some concern about, you know, break, I think coming back off a break, but we are continuing to be updated continuously. Some parents had asked me, were we still engaged, as we were? And that fact is yes. We're monitoring that. Dr. Oats also is keeping us informed of any issues. And again, I'd like to thank all of our staff. They're just doing a fine job.
Mr. Benton? You don't have to comment.
I was going to give you your motion to go.
I thought you had something to say, because you guys got those nice-looking West Brunswick masks on.
We got to watch the guys about 30 feet up in the air learning to climb scaffolding for the first time this year. So the construction class, now that they're back, so they had some new guys that got to learn to set up the scaffolding, climb up, set up the next level, and climb up again, and they're shaking, and we saw some fear in some eyes here.
There was fear in my eyes.
But, no, it was great. It was just great to see everybody out doing hands-on stuff again. So that was like, that was just a wonderful thing. But I was going to give you your motion to go to closed session.
We have a motion to go to closed session by Mr. Benton. We have a second?
Right.
Mr. Berger seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you.